Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. It is now 6:00 PM. Please stand for the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Asking you for your favor, that you'd stretch out your hand to us and give us wisdom and revelation direction on the business of the county. We also, Father, pause just for a second to think about the fact that we just passed another anniversary of 9/11. And we remember the sacrifice that was made by so many people and the families that are still living with the vestiges of that incident. We thank you, Father, for the courage of people that are first responders. We're thankful, Father, that we have people that we can call when we're really in trouble. We ask your blessing again tonight, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for all those attending this evening. We have a busy schedule. As we move along, I do have an additional item to add to the consent agenda, and it will be item number two, letter U, additional required Microsoft security licensing. Any other additional items for the agenda? Seeing there are none, do I have an approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can I get an approval for the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have two presentations of proclamations this evening, and the first one will be Tribute to Proclamation Honoring Nilla Dickey Sloop, and I understand the chairman of the Health Department or the Health Director.
Good evening, everyone. I give this tribute tonight, resolution honoring Ms. Nilla Dickey Sloop. I'm honored to read it, so thank you for allowing me to do that. Whereas Nilla Dickey Sloop has contributed greatly to the development of Lee County and the surrounding area through her service in the environmental health field and on various local boards and committees, and whereas Dickey began her environmental health career in 1967 in the Mecklenburg County Health Department, where she worked for three years, then returned to the profession in 1979, working as a sanitarian and later the program coordinator for the district health department, serving Chatham and Lee Counties. She transferred to the Wake County Health Department in 1987, where she has worked in various capacities and increasing responsibility, and retired from Wake County as a director of Environmental Health and Safety in December of 2005. And whereas she was the second female to enter the environmental health field in the state in 1992, and the first female animal control director of Wake County in 1995. Whereas Dickey was a member of the National Environmental Health Association, the North Carolina Public Health Association Environmental Health Section, the Eastern District North Carolina Public Health Association, and the North Carolina Environmental Health Supervisors Association. And whereas she served in leadership positions during her service in the North Carolina Environmental Health State of Practice Committee, and also served during the transition in profession from the North Carolina sanitarians to the North Carolina environmental health specialists. And whereas Dickey not only served at the state level, but also locally on the Lee County Board of Health from 2021 through 2022, in which she was reappointed three times, as well as on the Lee County Partnership for Children Board since 2014, and served as board chair from 2016 through 2019, and stayed on as past chair for another year. And whereas the Lee County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize and acknowledge the valuable service rendered by Dickey Sloop to the people of Lee County and expresses gratitude to her for her service, and now therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that a tribute is hereby bestowed upon Dickey Sloop for her numerous years of devoted service and meaningful contributions as mean of expressing appreciation and offering sincere condolences to the family, dated this 12th day of September 2022.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented? Motion's been made to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have the family here?
Yes, sir.
And can we please get a picture up front here with the... Come on, Commissioners.
This is a resolution in recognition of Donald Andrews and his years of service on the Lee County Fire Advisory Board. Whereas Donald Andrews began his service to the Lee County Fire Advisory Board at the establishment in March of 2006 as the business industry appointee, and was reappointed four times. And whereas during his service on the board, Donald Andrews served in the leadership role as chairman. And whereas Donald Andrews has provided dedicated and outstanding leadership to the Fire Advisory Board through his 16 years of service. And whereas the mission of the Fire Advisory Board shall be to make formal recommendations to the Lee County Board of Commissioners on fire protection and emergency services delivery. And whereas Donald Andrews also served as a responder for several other emergency service organizations, including the Lee Ambulance Service from 1984 to 1988, Whiteville Rescue Unit from 1990 to 1996, Boone Trail Emergency Services from 1998 to 2003, and the Cape Fear since 2003, where he currently holds the rank of captain and treasurer. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the hard work and dedication to an organization that provides outstanding support and guidance to the fire departments of Lee County. And now therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it recognizes and honors the 16 years of commitment that Donald Andrews has invested in furthering the mission and purpose of Lee County Fire Advisory Board, and wishes him continued success in all his future endeavors. Presented this 12th day of September 2022, Kirk D. Smith, Chairman, Lee County Board of Commissioners.
Could I please have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion has been made to accept the resolution in honor of Donald Andrews and his years of service to the Lee County Fire Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just on behalf of Emergency Services, as well as the Fire Advisory Board and the fire departments of Lee County, we wanted to present Donald with this statue in appreciation for the many years of dedicated work he's put forward to the board in advancing the mission of emergency services in this county as a whole. So, thank you, sir.
Now, if we could get the Commissioners, all the fire department members of the Cape Fear Fire Department, as well as those who are on the Fire Advisory Board that are present this evening, and those who have served on the Fire Advisory Board that are present this evening, Mr. Baker. I can't say enough for the Fire Advisory Board and Mayor Andrews. I did tell him that we will need him to help train the new chairman when it comes time for the budget, and working with Lisa in the past. So Lisa will have to work with training Candace as well, so we've got a lot of training to do before our next budget session. Thank you. Sure, please, sir.
Well, thank you for your confidence in your... in me to serve for the last 16 years. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve the Fire Advisory Board. I would like to thank Lisa Mentor for all her years of support. She knew every February and March she was going to be getting a phone call from me. Same thing with the guys at the emergency services in the Fire Marshal's Office. It wasn't me, it was a team effort. And then all the folks who have served on the Fire Advisory Board over the years. We had a great team, and it was my privilege and honor to serve. But the real people are the volunteer firemen who get up every day and respond to calls to their family, their friends, their neighbors, and complete strangers, whether it's seven o'clock in the morning or three in the mornings. I want to thank them for their service and support over these years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the zoning map amendment for rezoning application and staff report. Amy?
Good evening, Commissioners, Planning Board, and staff. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our new Planner One, a gentleman by the name of Curtis Lee, whom you will be working with in the future regarding rezoning requests. Curtis, if you'll stand up and wave to the crowd. All right. So I will be handing this over. You will... all your staff presentations will be from Curtis Lee. This information is on pages 118 through 145 of your agenda packet. And what we have this evening is Street Dog Properties is requesting to rezone 4.45 acres consisting of four parcels of land, two of which are developed with houses and have addresses of 3224 and 3226 Hawkins Avenue. The request is to rezone from residential agricultural to highway commercial to allow the installation of a self-standing ice vending unit and to market the remainder of the property for commercial development. This is a standard general use rezoning request as opposed to a conditional rezoning request. Therefore, no site plan nor subdivision plans nor building plans are required as part of All right, the site is located on Hawkins Avenue between Oak Park Road and the traffic circle connecting Hawkins Avenue and US Highway 1. It's across the road from the Sunset Hills subdivision, and once again is currently developed with two single-family homes. The existing zoning of residential agricultural is established to provide areas for low-density single-family uses, low-intensity agricultural operations, as well as agribusiness and supportive industrial and commercial uses. Examples of uses permitted by right within the RA zoning district include single-family homes, parks and playgrounds, and churches. There's a list of all the permitted uses in the RA zoning district included within your agenda packet. The proposed zoning is highway commercial, and it's intended to accommodate uses that depend upon a large flow of traffic and convenient access such as retailing of durable goods, the provision of commercial services to industrial areas, and the provision of services to tourists. Examples of uses permitted by right within the highway commercial zoning district include restaurants with or without drive-ins, convenience stores with or without gas sales, motor vehicle sales and service. And there's also a list of all the permitted uses in the zoning district included in the agenda packet for your reference. The zoning to the north is residential agricultural and highway commercial. To the south is highway commercial. To the east is light industrial. And to the west is light industrial, highway commercial, and residential agricultural. The adjoining land uses are single-family dwellings, and there's an MR Stoner Electric and Sanley Auto Sales nearby, as well as the Northview Fire Department. An additional vacant wooded land and a church is in the area. The Planned Sanley Long Range Plan identifies the site as the Maker District, which accommodates a wide range of small-scale light industrial uses and manufacturing activity using previously prepared materials, products, or parts. This may include processing, fabrication, assembly, packaging, incidental storage, sales and distribution, but not industrial processing. The local example is the area surrounding Lee Avenue and Rand Street in the Jonesboro section of Sanford. There are no local overlay districts that would be applicable for this site, such as a historic district or a floodplain area. The site appears to have access to public water but lacks sanitary sewer, and any utility connections and extensions would of course need to be approved by the appropriate agencies. The site has frontage on Hawkins Avenue, that's a DOT-maintained public street, with a 100-foot rideaway, and has an average daily traffic count in 2020 of 14,000 vehicles per day. It's also listed as an existing expressway in the Lee County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. If rezoned, all of the uses permitted in the highway commercial zoning district would be allowed to be developed on this property. Regarding the staff recommendation, the rezoning request complies with the Planned Sanley Long Range Plan designation Maker District, which lists highway commercial as a secondary zoning district with uses such as convenience retail, light manufacturing, flexible warehousing space, and business services allowed. Furthermore, this rezoning follows existing developmental patterns along Hawkins Avenue. Based on this rationale, staff is supportive of this rezoning request as it appears to align with a future plan for this area along with the current development patterns. The boards will need to take into consideration existing residential uses when considering rezoning to allow increasing intensity of uses within the area. Additional information presented at the public hearing should also be considered in the recommendation and the final decision regarding the requested zoning map amendment. This concludes my staff report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I've got at least one.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to make sure I understand exactly... Is this in the opportunity zone?
That I do not know. That's not typically included in our staff report, so I didn't research that.
Okay, well, how far from the stoplight and the apartment complex is already there?
The apartment complex that is already there on Hawkins Avenue? You're talking about Hawkins Run? The new one that's under construction?
The new one, yes.
The new one that's under construction is on the south side of the 421 bypass?
Yes.
And this is on the north side. You go... you cross that... you actually go to the traffic circle at... you know, there's two traffic circles, correct, on Hawkins Avenue? Right?
I probably ran through both of them because I saw about one.
Sure. Well, you run... well, you go through both of the traffic circles on Hawkins Avenue, and this is just north of that. There's a freestanding ice vending unit on your right before you get to a convenience store.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a little further past the convenience store and the older motel that's there. There's two existing older homes right after you pass MR Stoner.
Okay.
On the right side of the road. That's this location.
All right, thank you. It's not in there.
Okay.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No.
No other questions, Amy? Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing for the map amendment, zoning map amendment requests of four parcels addressed at 3224 and 3226 Hawkins Avenue from residential agricultural to highway commercial. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in support of the proposed rezoning? Please come forward. If you do, I do ask that you please identify yourself as well as your address.
I live 1414 Golden Circle here in Sanford. And I own the property, and I'm asking for the rezoning. I want to put the Ice House there. And I'm here to answer any questions if you might have any.
Thank you, Mr. Adcock. Any questions for Mr. Adcock?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the proposed rezoning? Anyone opposed to the proposed rezoning for 3224 and 3226 Hawkins Ave. from residential agriculture to highway commercial? Anyone else for or against going once, going twice? Public hearing is now closed on the rezoning request on four parcels addressed as 3224 and 3226 Hawkins Ave. Thank you. There are no public comments on file. Next item on the agenda is old business, request from Brick Capital Community Development to earmark $850,000 to be used for the benefit of the Washington Ave. project. Carrie, are you going to speak on this, or is this the attorney?
Brick Capital Community Development Corporation acquired property on Washington Avenue in which they're set to build low to moderate income housing. I know the board is familiar with that, since we had a public hearing at our special called meeting in August. I think that was August.
Yes, it was.
Whenever we had it. I don't know. So, at this time, and as part of the CDBG grant application, Brick Capital is seeking a commitment for the county to provide $850,000 towards the project. It's my understanding that the city of Sanford has or is going to commit $850,000 also for infrastructure for the site. Staff, we're still working on how we can provide that commitment, but at this point, because the grant application is due at the end of September, Brick Capital is just seeking that commitment, so we're asking that the board can appropriate up to $850,000 to be used for the benefit of the Washington Avenue project. Once Brick Capital receives the CDBG grant funds, and staff has determined the appropriate legal method to provide the funding, and any documents created to effectuate that transfer would be brought back to the board for final approval.
Thank you. Any comments from... any questions of the attorney regarding this? Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves?
You going to allow Brick Capital to speak, or...
We will, yes.
All right.
We can.
How was it?
Commissioner, no. Carrie, would you like to add, please?
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity and for consideration of this funding. I think many of you are familiar, but just as a recap, this is a project that we've been working on for a couple of years now. It is something that we are excited about bringing to the community. It's going to allow us to build 45 single-family homes in addition to a 16-unit apartment complex. This will also be the site of a community land trust model that I think I might have talked to the Commissioners about before, but just as a recap, a community land trust model is a sustainable model of workforce and affordable housing. Workforce and affordable housing usually is only affordable for that first generation, but with a community land trust model, the land is held in trust, and then the sticks and bricks is sold to the homebuyer. And then what happens is you enter it into a shared equity agreement with the homebuyer to where instead of getting 100% of the equity that builds in the home over whatever year period, you do a split with the homebuyer, say 50/50. So that way, in 10 years' time, when that homebuyer sells the property, instead of getting all of the equity that is accrued over that 10-year period, you split it 50/50 to where the homebuyer gets 50% of the equity, and then the trust, the land that's held in trust, pass along that other 50% cost savings to that next generation of homebuyer. So this project is really one that we're excited about. This model, this community land trust model, is a model that has been replicated across the country. Also, here in North Carolina, you'll see examples of this in Chapel Hill and Durham, to where it is a sustainable, ongoing model of affordable housing. So we're especially excited about this. We're especially also excited about the opportunity to bring more workforce housing here to Lee County. I know the Board of Commissioners is familiar with housing prices and where they've gone recently, and Lee County is growing. There's no doubt. There's lots of new construction that has come in, but for many families, new houses, let alone existing houses, are not allowing them to be priced into the market. And so we are giving the opportunity for teachers that serve in the county, firefighters that you just saw, police officers, to have a chance at homeownership in Lee County, as many others have had the example of. In addition, as you know, Brick Capital is also a HUD-certified housing counseling agency. We will be offering support to especially first-time homebuyers, not only in this neighborhood, but throughout the county of where we build, and those who are looking to purchase a home to help them navigate the home-buying process there. That service is free, that we offer to anyone who is looking for housing counseling there to purchase their home. Also, on the back end, if people are facing housing stability issues, whether it be foreclosure or eviction, we help out with eviction and foreclosure prevention as well as a housing counseling agency. And so those are just some of the activities that Brick Capital participates in. And again, we truly appreciate the Commissioners supporting us in this particular project, and we are excited about leveraging the funds that you're committing to this project with some state funds that we are pursuing as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Carrie? Commissioner Lovick?
If a homeowner purchases a home, then they get ready to sell, does it have to be sold back to low-income, or how does that work?
So they can sell it on the open market to whomever, but we are trying to get them to sell it to other people who need affordable housing. And so that is something, again, with that shared equity agreement, we are trying to get that next generation homebuyer into that property that might be priced out at that time. So they will have the opportunity to sell it. We are just... because the land would be held in trust, the prices would be kind of capped at that 50%, like we talked about there. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I appreciate what you've had to say. The one thing that I would ask is... I appreciate what you've had to say. The one thing that I would ask is that you perhaps give an example of how the land trust model will work for each individual that applies.
Absolutely. So with the land trust model, a, a homebuyer would be?
I don't need to name. Put it in writing and hand it out.
Oh, okay. All right. Yes, sir. Happy to do that.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I just want to say I support the project. Affordable housing is a, a big need in Lee County, and, and this really probably doesn't even scratch the surface of the needs that we have in affordable housing. And, and again, I support the project. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
You know, the only comment I have, because you're really pushing it for teachers, law enforcement, fire, that, that we really push that that gets the first opportunity to, to purchase.
Absolutely.
Not just something we say, it's something that we do.
Absolutely. And so Brick Capital's had a history of especially helping teachers. We have a long history of helping teachers in the community here. And so that is something that we'll definitely focus on. And something I, I want to make sure, because, not saying this about this board, but there's, there's a lot of different ideas of what Brick Capital actually does. We are very different from Sanford Housing Authority, public housing. We are focused on the workforce and those, excuse me, who are focused on serving our community with the work that they do. So again, especially teachers, firefighters, police officers, that is certainly a priority of ours.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Carver?
I just want to offer a word of thanks to Brick Capital for its impact on this community. I know that through perseverance, you've been having a vision for this particular project for a number of years. And you've stuck with it, and I appreciate that because it's going to make a big difference to the people that really are desperate for that affordable housing. So thank you to your organization, you personally. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And just as a note, this is $850,000 from the ARPA funding that we received, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve Brick Capital Community Development's earmark of $850,000 to be used for the benefit of the Washington Ave. project. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And one other thing. If you don't mind, would you have your board commit in writing to Commissioners Connect comment regarding?
Absolutely. We'll put that on the agenda of our next board meeting, and thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Carrie. Next item under new business is a firm to assist with aerial imagery project. Mr. Brown, sir, is that time of year again?
Glad to be before you tonight.
Glad to have you, sir.
County commissioners, other staff, this is in reference to a request for qualification that was issued on July 5th of this year. We asked the board to approve the recommended firm Eagle View to assist us with a aerial imagery project that we're looking to have done. Our first flight would be in December of '22. That would be aerial vertical view and an oblique view, which oblique view would be 45-degree angles from four sides. And then we're looking for a second project in the winter of '24, so around December of '24. The second project would include a change finder project. We have talked about the change finder project in some of our prior meetings that we've had where we have the aerial imagery from two different timeframes, and we're able to see for improved properties, any changes to those properties. Lisa Faulkner is appraisal manager. Candace Iceman and myself reviewed the three firms that had submitted to be considered for this project, and we came up with Eagle View as the, as the clear choice. We'd like to have your approval of that, and upon approval of that, we would look to enter a contract with them. Certainly, this is not a project just for the tax office because this, this aerial photography is used by a lot of other county departments, EMS, Sheriff's Department, Economic Development. Also, it's available to the public as well for the, for the imagery. So this does affect and have benefit for a lot of different uses.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Brown? Commissioner Carver?
None. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, I'm good.
I'll take your motion in order. I do have a question. Is this satellite or aircraft?
This would be by aircraft.
Okay.
It's, it's done, I, I don't have all the details, but it's basically done in a zigzag motion back and forth with cameras that actually take the photography. It's done with the, like I said, a vertical view and with an oblique view. So the oblique view, as it's flying along, it's taking four shots and a fifth shot straight down.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate your assistance.
Next item on the agenda is Project 483902022, Lee County Multi-Sports Complex Phase 2 Proposal from McAdams.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Dr. Grumton. I am requesting approval of Phase 2 design proposal for Project 48390222 by McAdams in the amount of $2,34,334 in order to complete design for our multi-sport complex. And we are also requesting for the Board of Commissioners, Chair, to sign the agreement following a legal review.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Geraldo? Commissioner Lovick?
So in this drawing that we had in our packet, is it moving the soccer fields from the original position and drawing to where the stadium baseball would be?
So there's a few things that we want to do, sir. Obviously, with, with the, the budget constraint that we have for the stadiums, what we want to do is utilize those two fields as an alternate, but move them to the area where the championship fields were. That way, we can mitigate some of the cost of utilities and road coming up to those upper fields. And hopefully, we can get, we can get that fit in there and then reserve the upper area where the fields were for the championship fields in the future for a possible Phase 2.
So it's not doing away with anything, is this?
We're not. We're just, for right now, if, it would, it would save us some, some funds because we will, we will be able to co-locate the parking lots into one centralized area, and it will keep us from having to build that road all the way to the back of the fields.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves, questions?
None.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
How many soccer fields are we ending up with if you move that blue square up?
So, so the intent is to have, and keep in mind, sir, that these are full-size regulation FIFA fields. So one field is three practice fields. So just ballpark fields, just big fields. Our intent is to finish with at least six of them, which would equate to 12 practice fields, which meets the intent. So we would have enough fields. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, are we going to be debating the motion on this? Or was this round of questioning the end of it?
No, this is questions.
Okay.
Mr. Geraldo.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to request the approval of Phase 2 design proposal for Project 4839-02-22 by McAdams in the amount of $2,34,334?
Don't move.
Motion's been made. Any discussion? Commissioner Carver?
Yeah. It, it's not hard to imagine why there's so many people in this county that really would like to have this as a resource for us. If we back the time, the clock back to when we discussed it, we had something in mind with a $25 million cap and the ability of the venue to provide specific things to the community. Because of the very real problems associated with inflation, we're to the point now where, if I read correctly what McAdams is talking about, they're shooting for something in the neighborhood of $36 million. And I'm not sure that that included the $2 million for the, the property. Did it, did that include the $2 million?
The $40 million that the board approved at, at the last discussion would include that.
And, and if I understand correctly, by the wisdom of the, the manager, he was advising that we go ahead and pursue this effort with the idea that he suspected that there would be a reduction in the total expense and the fact that maybe what we were talking about was somewhat inflated. And I understand that. It's also true that, that that effort is going to cost us $2 million. When we get finished with those numbers, we're still going to be looking at something on the neighborhood of $35 million, which is $10 million more than the $25 million from the first time. My question is, if we go back to when we started, if that was what we were going to get, this picture modified for $35 million, whether or not we do it, that was a prudent expenditure of funds? I'm just not convinced of that. I think we're, is spending too much money. The other aspect of it is, is I was wondering if, since this is a general obligation bond for $25 million, would we want to possibly go back and query our citizenry again to see whether or not they want to spend $35 million on it? That's a possibility. The other thing is, is there a possibility of being able to develop this property with a less sophisticated approach and just end up with the soccer fields that might meet the needs for a period of time? All that with the idea that we allow the clock to tick and possibly get to the point where we can gain some advantage on this inflation to some degree. In any case, my primary concern is the fact that we are spending an awful lot of money for a relatively small venue compared to what we wanted in, in the beginning. So I would encourage the commissioners to vote no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Connect? Comment? Commissioner Lavalley? Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Lovick? All right. Motion's been made to approve the Project 483902-22 Lee County Multi-Sports Complex Phase 2 Proposal from McAdams. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, the MOA between Wildlife Resources and Lee County Government.
Sir, before I sit down, if I may just, one second. Mr. Trudeau Atkins, can you please stand up? Sir, we have Trudeau Atkins and the staff right now. He's our Deputy Director of Development Services. He is far smarter than I am. So he is a great asset to the team, and, and we're extremely glad to have him here with us.
Trudeau?
Trudeau Atkins. Yes, sir.
Trudeau. I'm sorry.
T-R-A-D.
Send us a memo.
And he is?
Send us a memo, yeah.
Drinking from a fire hose right now, so he'll be okay.
How come we're the last to know this?
It's good, sir. Thank you very much.
Airborne. Welcome, sir. We're going to keep you busy. Oh, moving on, next item is the memorandum of agreement between Wildlife Resource and Lee County Government, and Mr. Keel is here.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Board of Commissioners, thank you again. So back in 2020, the Parks and Rec Department completed our comprehensive master plan. And during that process is a needs assessment for all the citizens of the county. And in that needs assessment, the, the thing that kept coming up was water access, kayak launches. That's what our citizens want to see. So working with the Deep River Park Association, we were able to secure a grant from the North Carolina Wildlife Commission to build two kayak launches on the Deep River. One would be on Highway 421, the other one on 15501. And in front of you is the MOA agreement with the Wildlife Commission to get these kayak launches built. So I'm here to answer any questions. They are ready to get moving. So we're looking to get some kayak, some kayak launches.
Commissioner Lovick, any comments, questions?
No, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm happy to see this. Thank you.
Commissioner Car, or Sharp, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy as well, being, sitting on the Parks and Recs Board. I know people's put in a lot of time with this. Chad Spivey, our director, Joseph R. Keel. And yeah, I support the project and look forward to this happening.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
An agreement? Commissioner Connect?
Is this the agreement where we just maintain the area? Is that right?
That, that's correct. So basically, day-to-day maintenance, if there's any big storms that would bring permitting processes into it, then they would actually come in and help us. But the day, the day-to-day stuff is what we would be responsible for.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion's been made to approve the MOA between the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission and the Lee County Government in regards to the proposed plan.
Thank you, sir.
The motion's been made. All those in favor, any further discussion?
I have a sidebar after we vote.
Okay.
Ask him a question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You have a question, sir?
Yes, sir. I'd inquired about the bathroom and facilities up at Jordan and Harris Lake.
Yes, sir.
Did you get any information on that?
I did not. So I reached out to them multiple times, and I left you a voicemail recording, trying to get, get ahold of them. But as far as getting a pinpoint person, it's, it's, it's been a hurdle.
The issue is, I've had a couple of families complain about the conditions of the rest areas. And I guess I compare them to the same thing you have on the highway, the rest stops. They take care of those bathrooms, why not the ones at Jordan and Harris? And if necessary, I would move that we ask our delegation to look into it, to find out who's responsible for keeping them clean.
Motion's been made to seek out from our representatives regarding who's responsible for the facilities at Jordan Lake and Harris Lake?
Right.
Any further discussion? We'll have the clerk draft this for us.
Thank you.
Can we work in some words and some specifics on that?
Oh, I trust it. Staff.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Thank you, sir. Any other questions of Mr. Keel? Next item on the agenda is the Lee County Comprehensive Emergency Plan Operations Plan for 2022 Revision Adoption. I don't think you've addressed the county commissioners in a while, have you?
No, sir. It's definitely been a minute since I've been in the hot seat. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For your consideration, this evening is the adoption of the 2022 revision to the Lee County Comprehensive Emergency Operations Plan. This plan was developed using best practices from FEMA's National Incident Management System as well as North Carolina Emergency Management. And at this time, it has been reviewed and approved by North Carolina Emergency Management and noted as exceeding state standards. Further, this plan has taken into account input and participation from many of our local and state stakeholders, both in the community and government and alike, and as well as our non-governmental and our nonprofit agencies. The plan is designed to take an all-hazards approach to incident management. And what that means is we are not looking to write a plan to address a specific issue, but we're looking to build a framework that Lee County can use to address any disaster, emergency, or other significant event that they experience, that we experience. As part of this plan, it goes through an annual update as well as a review. During this process, we mainly look to update standards that have changed as well as partnerships that have changed as far as representation, organization. And then every five years, this plan gets a complete five-year revision, which we've actually been working on since January of this year. And though emergency service leads this process, I think it's important to note that this is really a whole-community effort to reducing risk to Lee County citizens. If I, you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions, first off, before I ask the question of, or? Questions. First off, before I ask the question of each of you, has any, who has not had the chance to get by to review it? It is an extensive read. I spent two and a half hours the other day, and I'm only halfway through it. So I commend you on that. Commissioner Carver, any questions?
No question.
Commissioner Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Sharp?
No questions, but we, I do appreciate what you guys are doing and appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment. First off, I noticed there was nothing on earthquakes in there.
Sir, so as I mentioned earlier, we look not to identify specific hazards in the Emergency Operations Plan where we more so work to develop that framework. Every year, every five years, a complete THIRA process, which is a Threat and Hazard Identification Process, is conducted on a regional level. And then our office also does that on an annual basis to identify threats to our specific county. So that THIRA process is almost complete, and that document should be published in the next couple of months, at which point that I'll make sure the board receives a copy of. And in that, we look at specific hazards like earthquakes, hurricanes, or, you know, now we're also moving into more current issues such as cyber attack and that sort of thing.
I just want to commend you for making arrangements during our, we have our Local Emergency Planning Commission, and the past few we've been attending, you've been bringing in equipment from outside agencies and putting them on display. It made it a lot easier while I was reading that plan, and I could put into place these different groups that you've brought in. So I commend you on that, and I want to ask that you continue doing that as we move forward with our Local Emergency Planning Commission, because that really adds to the intensity and the complexity of how to react to emergencies, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we certainly intend to continue that, and, you know, we welcome members of the board or the community in general to the office anytime. We're happy to show you what we do and what some of our capabilities are.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to consider adoption of the 2022 Comprehensive Emergency Operations Plan?
So moved.
Motion's been made to adopt the 2022 Comprehensive Emergency Operations Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And be careful out there. Next item on the agenda is Title, excuse me, Title VI Program Plan Update for the County Lee Transit System. Mrs. Davidson is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you deny it, is the Title VI Program Plan Update for the County Lee Transit System. North Carolina Department of Transportation, the Federal Transit Administration requires various compliance reviews annually to continue the receipt of funding through those, both of those entities, the COLTS funding sources for FY23 or Section 5311 Administration, Consolidated Capital, and the Rural Operator Assistance Program grant rope that you just approved a few minutes ago. Total funding through these administrations for the FY23 year is four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, of which the county is asked to put in forty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars for matching funds. Lot of bang for the buck there, sorry. Usually, it's one review per year that we have to include. It's not limited to these. We have a full proficiency review and compliance that includes all personnel policies, financial reports, driver requirements, safety, van maintenance and protocols. That's the large one that we do roughly every four years now. The safety review that you all approved last year, some of you saw the document, it was about this thick. It's a full review of all of our safety policies and procedures. Our drug and alcohol policy compliance review is every three years with a six-month review of all of our drug testing results and procedures. We just had that, and they are very persnickety. They complained because we only had two of our tests that were afternoon. I'm not kidding. They look at it like a fine-tooth comb there. So Joyce and I have already talked about it, and we're changing that up. Some of the drivers are going to have to possibly work overtime to get their drug test at about four o'clock in the afternoon. But the Title VI Plan Update is every three years. The only changes to the current plan from 2019 were the tables, where I updated those with the census data based on the results of the 2020 census. The policy statement must be placed, that's the one that Commissioner Kirk Smith will sign. The policy statement must be placed in all of our vans and in the COLTS and senior services facilities for all employees to view. The review statements are signed by the Transportation Advisory Board members and the COLTS personnel. The current Title VI Plan Update has been approved pending signatures by the Safety Division Project Manager of NC DOT. Questions?
Thank you. Questions of Mrs. Davidson? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Connect? Why do I have to sign it in three different places?
You would need to talk with Shirley Mickelson of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, who has driven me crazy for the past six weeks.
Just kidding.
You also have to initial three or four places, too.
Yes, I saw.
There's a couple places you don't have to sign. That's me and the Transportation Board. Mr. Reeves will have to sign that as a board member.
Thank you.
Everything is very detail-oriented, trust me.
I'm aware of that.
Thirty years of it, yeah.
I enjoy catching their spelling errors. Do I have a motion to approve the updated Title VI Program Plan for the County of Lee Transit System?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the updated Title VI Program Plan for the County of Lee Transit System. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Managers' report. And our finance director is coming forward.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Thank you for having me. I submitted the monthly financial report for July 2022 and the sales tax reports for June 2022 collections for your review. We are at one point seven, eight percent of our adware budget, which of course is sure to grow quickly. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions of Candace? Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver? Just a question for you regarding the Fire Advisory Board. Will you be prepared to prepare those budgets when it comes time?
I will do my best. I'm sure that Lisa will be a great teacher.
I hope so.
I know she will. Thank you.
Thank you. And managers' report, sir.
You ready for me, sir?
You're ready, sir.
All right. I'll start with the Moore Training Facility here at CCCC. As you can see in the report, TerraQuest has been doing a lot of work at the site. Happy to say that their most expensive part of the work is complete. Now we're doing a lot of air quality testing, aquifer testing, and those types of things over the next sixty to ninety days. So far, initial test results are good, and we're hopeful that it will continue. We are still under the six hundred thousand dollar revised budget that we have for this project. Multi-sports complex, we've already discussed. The Horton Pool, the project is basically at a standstill due to unsuitable soils underneath the bathhouse. We are having additional soil sampling done at this time. We're hoping to get a game plan from our engineer on how we're going to replace the, replace the unsuitable soil and get this project back going. We're also having some issues in getting the pool permitting, but we believe we've worked that out, and hopefully we'll have a response from the engineer back to the Health Department, and we'll have that permit. We're still aiming to get this project ready for next summer's swimming season. No real update on the Hail Center. The engineering for the HVAC and roof upgrades continue. The library building project, we've had meetings with Vines Architects, Sanford Contractors, and our staff. We should have sent some revised project schedules and a concept plan to the board. If you have not received that, let me know, and we'll get that to you. But we seem to be moving, starting to move a little bit quicker with this project. We'd like to move it a little bit quicker than it is moving right now, so we'll be working on that. The Historic Courthouse, we've received the RFQs for the outside renovations of the Historic Courthouse, and the staff and the state are in the process of reviewing the RFQs for the design, and we should have that recommended award to you at the October 3 meeting. Had various reports. Here's the upcoming meeting schedule. The staff did want to discuss with the board the possibility of holding one meeting in November. The first meeting would be on the Monday before the Tuesday November election, and due to where Thanksgiving falls, the second meeting would be on the Monday of Thanksgiving week. So at this time, we were asking the board to consider holding one meeting in November, that to be on November 14.
Motion's been made to approve holding the November meeting on the second Monday of the month of November, 14th of 2022. Any discussion? Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you all.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
Sounds good to me.
One meeting in November. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
My last item, Mr. Chairman, is the Health Directors asked me to make the announcement that, starting this week, the Health Department will be giving the COVID booster, the bivalent, each Thursday, in addition to the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday schedule that they have, that's one to four. So it'll be one to four, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at the Lee County Government Center. You can schedule an appointment by calling 919-842-5744, and I got mine on Friday. Just so you all know. There always has to be a guinea pig in the room.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Quick question. As far as the Moore Center is concerned, can they start moving over there and start doing things, or do we have to wait for that sixty to ninety days?
Um, the, we have to wait the sixty, ninety days before they can pave over the top of that area, but the rest of the facility, DEQ, is given the county and the, and the Community College to go ahead and design, start construction in the buildings, do whatever's needed. So I have communicated that to the President.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions of the manager? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Lovick?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to commissioners' comments before we go into closed session. Start with you, Commissioner Lovick.
Couple, well, it's been a couple months. Anyway, the North Carolina Commissioners Association, I was unfortunate enough to attend that and learn some pretty good stuff in that, that we're, we're a very giving county in a lot of ways. There's some counties that don't even donate to any nonprofits whatsoever. So we learned that, and did learn that our North Carolina Education Lottery, I'm disappointed in the amount of funds, and we may need to get our local representatives to look into that. It's twenty-four percent is all this giving back to education, and in my opinion, that's a low amount. So with that being said, that's all the comments I have.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the board for the support on the workforce housing. I think that that is a very important part of economic development, and it doesn't work if we don't have it in place. So thank you all.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Reeves. Thanks everybody for supporting that. I think that's one of the top priorities for a lot of people, and it's, a lot of people need that, need that help. So, thank you.
Commissioner LaValle?
Yes. An event to put on your calendars if you can attend. Experience 180, which is a nonprofit that works with reentry, is having a resource fair, and that's a chance for other resources to come together, but also for the public to learn more about what they do and to learn more about these resources. So that's next Tuesday, September 20th, at 10:00 a.m., and the address of that is 2516 Fayetteville Street in Sanford. And that's all I have. Yeah.
Commissioner Connect?
I just, it was good to see the pub commission honoring Ms. Loop. I mean, I was in the health board with her the whole time, and she's a well of information. Dealing mist. Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
Maybe a little bit unusual comment for this meeting, but I've grown up around information about Queen Elizabeth. She took responsibility for being the queen in 1952, as I recall. And when I was being raised, I remember my parents pointing to her and her ability to face some rather difficult situations and still with a great deal of grace deal with them. I just feel like when I look back on her seventy years, that there's a good lesson there for us in terms of the way we do business in public, and I appreciated her leadership during that time. The other comment that I would make is this, the recognition of 9/11, and I know we still are suffering in this country because of the ramifications of that as it relates especially to the people who lost, people that were so important to them. And my heart goes out to them, at the same time recognizing how important this EMS business is to us. We talk about how long it takes for a, an ambulance to get to somebody that is on the cusp of possibly dying, and sometimes we don't appreciate those people as much as we should. Anyway, those ideas of things that have happened in the past just come to mind at this time. I'm particularly thankful, again, for this EMS effort that's made in this county. Thank you.
I would like to add some key points. That on, on the 30th of August, our attorney, Autumn Smith, the clerk, Commissioner Carver, and I went to Durham for a very intensive Criminal Justice Resource Center briefing. Those folks worked through their lunchtime, and they had to run and go to other meetings when we finished, but they took care, sharing with us how they deal with people involved in the criminal justice system and transitioning back into the, to the workforce or into communities after their incarceration. Also, I had the clerk make copies of the key, the key materials that we got from the Emergency Preparedness Course that I took at the North Carolina Association of County Commissions. There's one sheet in there that's quite extensive on who does what and how to interact as individuals of the Emergency Preparedness Teams that we have to interact with as well. And the Veterans Treatment Court, I, we had the opportunity, took the county attorney, and Commissioner Carver and I went and spent through, what, good four and a half, four and a half hours of the Treatment Court, pretty intensive, had two graduations of veterans who had gone through the complete treatment and had actually graduated from the course to move on to be productive citizens and not to have a stain on their, on their service to their country. Without that, I have nothing further. Yes, sir?
I've got a question for the staff. On the opioid results, I know what portion the county's got. Is there a public notice on what the attorneys received?
Um...
I want to see how much they beat us.
I don't know the answer to that. I can find out. I know at the, at the federal level, there was a fund that they had to opt into. I'm not sure how much that was or how much it was distributed amongst all the national attorneys.
All right, I'm patient. I can wait.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just want to remind everybody about the Lee Regional Fair on Wednesday. I forgot to mention that in my report. Starts Wednesday, and hopefully everybody can get up there at 4:45 for the ribbon cutting for the fair.
And I understand that I'm volunteered to be the mayor... And I understand that I'm volunteered to be the mayor's, what is it, cupcake competition this year? I don't know.
You're a taste tester.
I'm a taste tester.
Cupcake competition.
So the mayor of Broadway, the mayor of Sanford, and the Lee County Chair. Okay. Without further ado, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute 143-31811A3 to consult with our attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Oh, excuse me. All those in favor go into closed session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.